Okay, if I can have everybody's attention, please. Okay, remember last night, we got home, and just the way they did, happened as was. They said, "We do not want them," with the exception of one place. It's eight minutes old, second act. Uh, you know, we have your love and chairs.
Call to order!
Call to order!
The town meeting's about to begin!
The town meeting's about to begin!
I say, young and old people, it's time you took some pride in this town. So tell all of your friends and neighbors, they better get their bodies on down. If we don't get enough people at this meeting, everything will turn upside down. We have one of the oldest town meetings in the land, I think I should note. I say, it's a privilege we've got, we decide everything by vote. Are you gonna get down here on your own, or do I have to grant you by the throne? Are you listening?
Yeah!
Put your hands together! Dip-dah, dooby-dooboo!
Dip-dah, dooby-dooboo! Do, 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 what town meeting tonight? Dip-dah, dooby-dooboo! Dip-dah, dooby-dooboo! Do, 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 what town meeting tonight?
So you'd rather watch football?
Football!
Than Victor here and fight all night? But it's a close call!
Close call!
Town meeting is a better sport. This is a forum!
Forum!
It takes all kinds, so speak your mind. We need a forum!
Forum!
If the meeting's gonna happen at all!
All those acts is called an project. Come, let's stretch out, teach this project. Give you care of touch of land. Here I go, and take a stand!
Dip-dah, dooby-dooby-doo!
Dip-dah, dooby-dooboo!
Do, 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 what town meeting tonight? Meeting tonight! Dip-dah, dooby-dooby-doo!
Dip-dah, dooby-dooboo!
Do, 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 what town meeting tonight?
My name is Arnold Winbag, and as you know, I live at two seventy-six Old Lancaster Road. As a lifelong resident of this town, I feel it is my duty to tell you the entire history of this particular item of the Lord and the Lord. This item was first introduced in nineteen fifty-three, and has been used ever since.
You're quickly gonna learn this!
Learn this!
The night gets long, so bring some coffee in a thermos!
Thermos!
So wide awake, you'll stay lots of sensitive issues!
Tissues!
Gonna make you cry, so go and buy some tissues!
Tissues!
And wipe those tears away. I'm singing, dip-dah, dooby-dooby-doo!
Dip-dah, dooby-dooby-doo! Do, 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 what town meeting tonight?
Dip-dah, dooby-dooby-doo!
Dip-dah, dooby-dooboo! Do, 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 what town meeting tonight?
My name is Peter Noig. I've recently come from England. God bless and serve our King. I came to make my fortune in this good land. We landed in Boston, then went right to Watertown. But that was a busy, crowded place. Everything divided up, being built up. Streets and lanes everywhere, like Swansea or Southampton. But not for my life. I'm from the country, I'm not a city person. But all of the choice farms along the Charles River have already been settled. So I asked, "What lies further west?" Wide open spaces, hills and valleys, rivers, great and small. Indian tribes of every description. No one was rightfully sure. This fired my imagination. So late in the summer of sixteen thirty-eight, I went out to the Indian Trail to see for myself. And then, I cast my eyes upon the Skeetland River Valley. Lush with thick growing meadows, dense forests, streams full of fish, and waterfall of every kind. And I knew, this is good land. I told it to my friend, Brian Hamilton, and Edmund Brown, a man newly schooled in the Word of God and a doctor of chemistry music. What modelous fellows to share this land, our new endeavor. We petitioned the general court, and were granted in sixteen thirty-eight a charter for a new plantation, west of Watertown. We named this good land, Sufferidge Plantation, after Edmund Brown's native home.
Grass and timber is great and tall, and tend to work to fell and fall. Must have new homes built upon. Good land, good land, good land! Good land! Vision ain't too dry and sore.
Pick and build on fields of flour.
Boy for winter's active thoughts. Good land, good land, good land! Good land! Travel through the wood, to the water's edge. In the wild, slithering charade. Witchman's word is golden. A land that comes through the veil. Feed the lives on a day of the hay.
Seed the grass and shake the blade.
Horses to build and goats to bay. Good land, good land, good land! Good land!
Uh, concerning the plantation for your worship, I have traveled all around the country, and have found many good places. There be many lords who have found plantations here. But if a gentleman intended not to come himself, or to elect true and godly men in agriculture, he will surely be the loser by it. There is much to be gotten in that morn, in that manner, according to the custom of the plantation, if the Lord bless the increase. Yours to command in all Christian service. Side Edmund Brown.
It is my duty to report to you, sir, that there is nothing here. No ale houses, no markets, no light smidgen shops, or iron workers. No cloth weavers or dyers. You will need bring with you everything that you may require. There is nothing here! With all respect to your grace, Francis Pagan Sun.
Gentlemen, gentlemen! We have only a few more orders of business before us. Now, we've already signed parcels of land to the two new families that have arrived. We have discussed and set fair levels of wages for work done on our plantation. We have authorized the assessors to set their tax rates. Coming here?
Yes, Mr. Pope, right.
I've had it with this colonial life. It's back to old England with the crowding and all the conveniences. I want to rent out my farm stand and leave.
You can't rent your share of common ground. In England, we were all forced to be tenants, and we have no intention in perpetuating that system over here. If you can't work it yourself, you must either give or sell it to someone who will.
But that's not fair! I've cut timber, I've cleared a field, I've even set rock fences. I have a right to continue to profit from my work.
You may sell your land, your livestock, your tools, and any other possessions you mind to. But when you've left, these must belong to those who remain.
I'll bet you just made that rule up.
Well, we all created that rule together. We voted on it at a town meeting open to all. Mr. Haynes, can you find it in the book?
I, just as you said, and it passed twenty-two to four.
And approved by the general court of the king's governor.
I beseech you then, each of you, as friends, to make an exception to my case. I'll need every pound I can raise to get back to England and to start a place there, start a life there. I'm desperate for you to make an exception to my case.
I am sorry, but laws made by the town meeting apply to us all equally. We'll buy at a fair price any of your farm standing goods we can use, and we'll wish you Godspeed back to England. Now, we have an urgent matter before us. We are, all of us, farmers, with only those skills that go with our work. Now, we'll be bringing in a good crop of corn this year, with our friend Cato's help and with the Lord's providence. But we will need a miller to grind it into flour. Now, I have located an excellent journeyman in Watertown, where there are many millers. One Thomas Cakebread. Now, we could provide Mr. Cakebread with land by rushing brook for a mill and help in building it. We'll grant him sole privileges, privilege to grind corn, oats, and other grains at fair rates which we will establish, and the right to breed saltine. All in favor?
Aye!
Then I appoint Robert, Thomas, and Henry to speak to Mr. Cakebread forthwith, so that we may satisfy his needs. Now, our next order of business concerns a request from Chief Cato, who has expressed a sincere desire to learn and understand the Word of God.
He's a savage! I'm a friendly, ingratiating one, but a heathen! Unbaptized, unschooled, unprepared for salvation. He may be asking this of us just to trick us.
No. You may call him a savage, yes, he is a product of his birth. But an honest and forthright neighbor, has he not shown us how to harvest and plant corn? Has he not taught us better ways to dredge fish from our rivers and streams? Has he not shown us where the game running is springed, and even shared with us from his own corn when our stores were running out? Do I hear emotion?
We were all born savages, to remain so, until we were educated in the true spirit of God. If this man be false, we'll wipe him out and expel him. But if he be true, and show merit, is his soul not worthy of salvation as any of ours? I move that we accept him to listen to and to be a member of our worship community, and that we judge his behavior, not his skin or his manner of dress.
Do I hear a second?
Second, aye.
All in favor?
Aye!
And opposed?
Nay!
I will rule with the eye's habit, though we may take a count if anyone insists. Then let me urge each of you to speak with Cato, to learn of his heart and to decide if he be allowed to continue in our community. Now, it's time to vote the preacher's salary.
For town preacher, for the coming year, forty pounds. Half to be paid sterling, and half in wheat, peas, butter, cheese, hemp, flax, beef, and pork, and other commodities as may be available and needed.
All in favor?
Aye!
We have now spelled every position, both elected and appointed, and we're prepared to begin the coming year. To ensure the prosperity of this town, each and every one among us has a job to do.
Each and every one among us has a job to do. Everyone's full selves are whole and needs to come running through. Every year's voting, the most things each one has to do. Work a job and give the process. Each person has much to learn. In this wonderful new country, we have duties with no birthright ties. Each and every one of us helps to keep this town alive. If you don't like what you're doing, no need to complain. There's still air on your job waiting. Yes, one won't be such a spring. This one, we're all new country. We have duties with no birthright ties. Each and every one of us helps to keep this town alive. We all keep this town alive. Each and every one of us has a job to do. Every girl's bloom is important, man and woman, children too. Each of us, we do our duty, all war that is fought. With a will, we enter freely, joining hands and heads and hearts. With strong wills, we enter freely, joining hands. Joining hands, yet all.
Good land goes very fast. We now have the third claim. And as soon as some new land is available, a new family arrives to lay claim to it. Soon, only rocky lands and hilly forest land remain. Here I am, a selectman and all, do I have any special privilege? No. I wait and work my father's land. When I decide to take a wife, we'll see if any scratchy dirt patches remain. While I, for one, do not intend to wait for that scrap piece of land. There's a world of choice new land to be had, to the west. It's a new plantation called Wit Sufferidge.
Aye, that's a good name.
It's good land, and it's unplanned.
Maybe we could get a sponsorship from the Duke of Marlborough, stands this close to the king.
Well, my mind is settled, I'm going west.
And I'll go with you.
They are ruled by selfishness and ingratitude. They've forgotten how we carved this land out of dense forests. We cut, cleared, and planted each field. We rolled every stone by the sweat of our backs.
Well, let them go to Wit Sufferidge, Peter, fill the summer and how hard we've worked.
But this movement west, they antagonize the Indians who live up there.
Ten thousand years, we've loved this land. Ten thousand years, it shaped our hands. This is our mother, this land is our home. Ten thousand years on this earth, it are grown. It gives us shelter, it gives us bread. Ten thousand years, it's been our bed. It is this land that gives us birth. And when we die, we return to the earth.
I sign these deeds freely and willingly, not for the wanton, for I have enough of that, but out of the love and regard I have for my neighbors, to whom these deeds seem so important. Land belongs to God. It was here long before I first walked it, and will be here long after my last footsteps. But for your satisfaction, I make my sign.
I'll sign too.
In view of our neighbor Cato's expression of affection and good fellowship, as well as my impression that he has sincerely sought to learn and understand the Word of God, I move that we confirm him as a member of our worship community. I further move that we call him by his Christian name, Goodman.
Aye!
And his hill will be called Goodman's Hill.
Aye!
I have agreed that Cato Goodman is a sincere friend. But he's an exception. Jethro and his band who live on Doskin Hill in Domsday, they were once friendly. Now they have been encouraged by the warlike Wampanoags to fight against us. I heard tell, north in Lancaster, Indians have attacked and massacred settlers. Women, children! Yes, we cannot allow Jethro and his band to sit on the highest point in the valley, ready to come down and burn our homes, murder our families.
I will talk peace with them.
Cato, they are not like you. We cannot trust them, nor can we allow them to remain. We must send our militia to drive them out. Aye, so move!
And secondly, is there any further discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye!
So those opposed, move that this town meeting is adjourned.
I heard Jethro and his band had refused to leave, even though they were told they would be driven out. They've been fired upon, removed in irons, their village burned. Now Jethro has been imprisoned, though he has sworn vengeance against the militia. Ah, I think he's been hanged.
You killed my people as you killed God's son.
How can your pure heart understand that evil begets evil?
They were my brothers.
But they would not go peacefully, there was no other way.
Where is peace and friendship? My mouth is filled with bitter grain. My eyes weep, yet I have no tears. The waters of my soul are parched dry.
We gave some land to your families. We sacrificed, prayed that you would let us... We sacrificed, prayed that you would let us be. But you would never satisfy. You take our land, you take our life. You take and take and you never give. Back to the land that blessed you live. You tear it apart, you strip it bare. Ten thousand years, ten thousand years. Ten thousand years is a wise old day. And we are patient, we hold back our rage. But when we break and fight with you, ten thousand years are mighty weeks.
So we can defend our farms, stock up the garrisons with powder and balls, and get the militias from other towns and other settlements to assist us.
We will try to avoid war at all costs, but we should be prepared for the worst. Members of our militia have traveled widely among neighboring Indians in an effort to maintain peace. They return now.
We saw it in the book, massive old Goshawatie bands. Hundreds of brave sons with guns in their hands. Captain Nosley sallied in, look of glint in his stare. We brought offers of peace, but there's war in the air. From England we sailed across the great sea. Arrived with our hopes and the broadest old dreams. And because this town is so proudly called home. I've left too long gone. I'm so glad that you're home. We saw it in the book, massive old Goshawatie bands. Hundreds of brave sons with guns in their hands. And there are burning torches, soon it will ignite. In my heart is a peace, but there's fire that I know. Always for peace, I'm so glad that I know.
He has arrived.
Hooray for the help, we'll lick them now.
Take every shot out.
You did, man, fake handed you.
God, Ebro's here, drive him back, cross the bridge.
Don't chase him over.
Would be a trap.
They're slacking off.
We've held our ground. River Brown, the boss of us.
May God, by whose divine providence we all live, raise the souls of those who pale and weary, have fallen in defense of their homes. May His countenance shine upon those who remain to rebuild the homes and farms that have been destroyed. May the widow and the orphan be treated with generosity and compassion. We thank thee, O merciful God, for our deliverance.
Now the flooding was fierce this year. For the past three weeks, those of us who live on the west side of the river have been unable to afford at any point to attend meeting or worship.
Since the David Dam was built in Billrick, spring floods have grown worse. What was avoided down there has been visited upon us now further upriver.
And training him has withdrawn from our plantation.
That's just as well, there wasn't often our area to try to defend. But what are we going to do about the flooding this spring?
I move that we petition the general court for a second parish on the westernly side of the river. Our meeting house has grown too small to accommodate the needs of all those who must fulfill their religious obligations. With a second parish, those of us on the westernly side of the river would not have so far to travel, and that sounds right.
Let's put it to a vote, gentlemen. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We will petition the general court. And speaking of the general court, I have in front of me a notice which indicates that the Town of Sudbury has been fined five pounds for failure to comply with the regulation which states that all towns and communities with hundreds or more families shall have a schoolmaster and a schoolhouse.
Didn't Edmund Brown agree to town fifty pounds for grammar school?
Yes, he did.
Well, what happened to the money?
It was spent in defense of the town. If your children are dead, we'll have none to school. Move we appropriate necessary funds to employ proper schoolmasters and to make every effort to find one. And I add to that motion that we build a schoolhouse.
This is really necessary.
The regulation is clear and we must comply with it.
We can build a school together, and it will belong to us all. But soon we'll need another schoolhouse, and more teachers.
At this time we have no choice, we cannot vote it down.
Mr. Moderator, I think this school budget has gotten out of hand.
Could we see the budget on the screen, please? Well, I don't think we're quite ready for that yet. We now require thirty pounds for the schoolmaster, which have to be provided in goods and commodities, and fifteen pounds for the schoolhouse.
Are you sure there is no recourse?
We have no recourse, the general court says we must have a schoolmaster and a schoolhouse. All those in favor?
Aye.
To moderator, I must point out that this is a very dangerous precedent.
Well, we have all servants like men with us today. Mr. Flimpton, Lieutenant Moore, Captain Smith, Captain Howe, Captain Cunningham, Colonel Lloyd, Lieutenant Hurd. Clerk Maynard has read the town report, and we have considered and voted for the town budget. One hundred and forty-eight pounds for two passes, seventy-four pounds each. Thirty pounds for our schoolmaster. Twenty pounds for school repair and upkeep. Thirty pounds for relief to the board and lesser workers to meet the town obligations and to cover unnecessary services. We have been fortunate, this being a dry year, that we didn't lose our bridges and have to expend funds to repair it.
Thank God the rain held so the building was complete.
Is there news from Boston? I heard from my cousin in Charleston that things have become very tense. Parliament has tried putting additional export taxes on glass, iron, and even tea. Taxes above and beyond what other Englishmen are required to pay for these necessities. We are being punished for having ventured to America to serve the purposes of the Crown across the sea.
I think Parliament presents that here we are prospering, and we do not have to provide troops from the King's army.
But we've all had to serve the militia here, we've done ours here. Why, there have been many battles, both locally and up through Champagne into Canada.
We haven't been second-class citizens. Yet when we've asked for our rights as Englishmen, we've been refuted or ignored.
The Minister of the Colonies is not sought to protect our rights. Instead, he tries to squeeze more out of the colonies.
And now Parliament has passed an act to record our troops in our homes. Mind you, these are not troops sent to protect or defend us. We do that ourselves. These are English regulars or mercenaries sent to occupy and intimidate us. Our call for rights is being treated as revolt.
Well, perhaps it should be. There's a convention being organized to consider such matters and take action in concert. As a major town in Massachusetts Bay Colony, we ought to be represented at that convention. But how can we avoid the appearance that that convention is an act of treason or defiance?
Let's call our participation for the purpose of ensuring these towns' peace and safety.
So move.
We have the matter of expenses to the new county road through swamp to the schoolhouse. All in favor of paying these obligations, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is a vote.
Mr. Lloyd, I have a resolution to propose. Be it resolved that the town will in cheerful concurrence with our Boston brethren encourage the manufacture of nails and other necessaries in Boston, which now require importation at great cost. Further, be it resolved that we will support a certain group of Boston merchants to put a stop to the importation of taxed British goods.
That may be viewed as revolutionary treason.
I am as good and loyal a British subject as the next man. But when my king sets a policy of punitive taxation, forbids me to make goods in my own house, so that he can tax me on what he provides, and then threatens to order troops in my house to force compliance, then he ceases to be my protector and becomes a tyrant. For this I cannot be loyal.
Gentlemen, these are troubled times. We surely need the oil of reason and restraint upon these troubled waters.
Well, there better not be a tax on the oil.
We, the freeholders and other inhabitants of the Town of Sudbury, professing the greatest loyalty and sincere affection to our most gracious sovereign George the Third, and our sincere regard and profound reverence for the British Parliament as the most wise, powerful, and respectable body of men upon earth, being by royal charter heirs apparent to British liberties, cannot be guilty of such horrid porphytrousness as to violate or tamely give it up, especially when we consider the vast expensive blood and toil our forefathers have been at to procure.
Mr. Moderator, I move we send a letter to the King and our esteemed Parliament affirming our undoubted rights in concert with other towns in this province, respecting any manner of grievance that threatens our liberties or our Charter rights. We must urge him to pay heed to an agent selected by the representative body of this province, listen to our grievances, and redress them, else we will have no recourse but to disobey any unjust laws or reasons.
I will hear a motion that the Town of Sudbury appropriate sufficient funds to maintain our militia in a state of readiness and supply, and that we join with our neighboring towns of Concord and Stone.
Let it also be said that if we are threatened, or any of our neighboring towns are threatened, that our militia will speedily and rightfully come to their aid, so that the Crown will answer to us one by one.
Do I hear any questions or dispute? If not, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So let it be recorded this fourteenth day of November seventeen seventy-four.
Massachusetts is declaring a state of rebellion!
Then we'd best be well ready to defend our homes.
I have a word ready, let them come, we'll show them right.
Isn't anybody afraid?
Of course we're afraid. But we've trained hard, and we've learned what we need to do. When the time comes, we'll equip ourselves well. When we're in battle, there'll be no time for fear.
The British are coming! The British are coming by land to Concord!
I'll be ready, boys. British are coming, boys! British are!
Tell Lord for these thy children who take their farms in righteous defense of their hounds and their families, and in opposition to tyranny. May you promote their endeavors, and may they return home safely to their families.
It was a long march. We moved as quick as we could, led by Captain Aaron Haynes. When we got near to the North Bridge, we could hear shot fire and smell gun smoke. As we came closer, we could see the redcoats already fight, trying to carry their wounded with them, and turning to fire baldies at our militia. We gave them no good target, spreading out and firing as we got closer. "Don't waste your musket balls, son," shouted Colonel Nixon. "Hold your fire until you can make each shot count." I knelt behind a stone wall for cover and fired. Then I noticed a still hand hanging over the wall. I looked cautiously over and saw a redcoat, young, like myself. Sorely wounded, lying still with a pool of blood around him. I looked hard at his face, but it was pale and still. "Oh, God," I thought, "what have I done?" My mates pulled me along. "No time to waste, that's a dead one." I was to see many more redcoats killed and wounded at Bunker Hill, where we held on fire till we could see the whites of their eyes, and only had to retreat when our gunpowder was exhausted. I saw many friends wounded, and some killed or to die of it. We were called on to fight everywhere!
On this June tenth, seventeen seventy-six, it's been voted in town meeting that, in case the honorable Congress, good for the safety of the American colonies, declare them independent of the Kingdom of Great Britain, they, the inhabitants of said town, will, with their lives and fortunes, support them in whatever measure, and will choose a committee to represent them in the Continental Congress.
Time on the run!
Seratoga! White Lake! Harsh Town! Freedom's mine!
Sudbury is now a major town in the Free Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Hip, hip, hoo! Hip, hip, hoo! Hip, hip, hoo!
We want liberty by George, this is what I want. But when the cavalry's brave, the raps is signed to show. We want liberty by George, no more terrors, no more. We'll stay in our rank and gate, by your freedom, by our force. We want liberty by George, this is what I want. Cause when the cavalry's brave, the raps is signed to show. We want liberty by George, this is what I want.
Here ye, here ye! August thirteenth, seventeen seventy-nine, town meeting approves the results of Concord relating to the prices of the necessaries of life. Prices set by the Sudbury community, here ye! Western bean run by the barrel, six pounds, two and six. Lethyin, twenty shillings. Common meal at the inn, twelve shillings. Large egg, four shillings. Keeping a yogurt box in the night, fifteen shillings. Here ye! Town meeting approves the results of Concord relating to the prices of the necessaries of life.
A dollar's only worth, one dollar can get you. Ain't no more sterling for a face. A dollar's only worth, one dollar can get you. It changes all the times from place to place.
Two years ago, we paid our minister seventy-four pounds. Last year, we paid him two hundred and thirty-seven pounds. And this year, it's over one thousand pounds. His service ain't gonna pay more, they just cost more.
A dollar's only worth, one dollar can get you. Your money would equal what you spend. A dollar's only worth, one dollar can get you. Best shut your goner mouth, buy what you see.
Three years ago, school cost the town thirty pounds. Last year, four hundred pounds. This year, two thousand pounds. Can't be that much more to learn.
A dollar's only worth, one dollar can get you. It seems we all got cash to burn. A dollar's brand worth, what you willing to pay for? Look at those prices, think how we learn.
In seventy-six, we paid forty-five pounds to the poor, and it was enough. In seventy-seven, we voted a hundred and fifty pounds. In seventy-eight, three hundred pounds. In seventy-nine, two thousand pounds. And in seventeen eighty, four thousand pounds. Must be a lot more extravagant for folk around.
A dollar's only worth, one dollar can get you. That money, money's dropping down, 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 down. A dollar's only worth, one dollar can get you. There's lots of big, big bills round this poor town.
Everything's had gone up, and we don't like that.
I paid half of twenty-three thousand nine hundred for my house. In seventy-two, I added a playroom for twelve thousand. Now, I just sold the house to a young couple for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And they thought they were getting a bargain. Now I like that.
That we are taxed equally and the funds are spent equally.
That's right. We are the establishment of East Sudbury, taxed sorely to pay for their longer roads, their scattered schools, repair their bridges.
What do you propose, John?
I propose we divide the town naturally, as a river divides east and west. Of course, in matters of emergency, we quickly come to each other's aid.
The General Court may reject our petition, even if we pass it. They don't favor more small towns.
This special town meeting has been called by those of us who live on the west side of the river. We desire to prevent the division of the town, because it would cause us great pain and hardship.
We would lose our supply of gravel for roads. The only gravel pit is on the easterly side. We would have to raise our taxes to maintain our roads and schools.
And it will be a major burden for the care of the poor, and most of them live on this side of town.
Though I fear this division is inevitable, I don't like it. We must seek arrangements that will take care of these problems. After all, the people of East Sudbury are not our enemies. In these times of rising costs and uncertainty, we must look with reason towards one another, even as we go our separate ways.
Malicious sentiments arose within my congregation. A delegation of my parishioners came to my house, beseeching me to continue the exchange of pulpits with ministers from surrounding towns, a custom I've always looked upon with some concern. Reverend Hurlberg, we don't like the ministers you pick, they treat just like you. Mr. Hurlberg, we want to hear the new Unitarian ministers. The radical Christless ones. I refused. I reminded them that I have been ministering to this parish for the past twenty years. My reappointment renewed each year by renewal of my skyrend. I have heard some of these new ideas and am not muchly impressed by them. The religion of our Puritan forefathers is uncompromising. It has served us well and has provided us steadfast guidance. As your minister, it is my duty to minister to my flock, to teach the true word of God, safeguarding you from confusion and blasphemy. If you disagree, you may go elsewhere. The Methodist meet regularly and would welcome renegades from First Parish. Of course, it was not to end there. One Sunday morning, I arrived at church in my usual fashion to find worship service already begun without me. I was stunned. I pushed upon the door and found it barred from within. I knocked upon the door loudly with my fists. It grew silent within, but the door did not open. I struck the door loudly with my cane, crying, "Open this door in God's name and let your minister in!" Finally, the bar was removed and the door opened. I entered, trying to maintain my composure. I looked at the members of my congregation, one by one. The scoundrel freethinker, Dr. Stanley, was there, although he had been excommunicated. My heart was breaking. But I was not about to violate that church with anger. I invited my flock to leave with me and worship elsewhere. Christ no longer dwells at First Parish. It is an empty and godless hell. Many left with me. Oh, I have heard that they have begun having worship services again at the church with one or another of these new ministers. It's not my affair. When I was ordained, I swore to teach the true word of God and Christ. I had no other course.
The eighteen-fifties, a time of railroad. Not iron railroad, smoky and noisy. It's a time for quiet railroads, hidden, underground railroads.
We're riding a train tonight?
Maybe yes, maybe no. Might be four passengers headed north to Lancaster, and a load of hay. The trip's to the head.
What are they going to Lancaster for?
They're heading for freedom.
But they're railway slaves. Lawyers are supposed to return them to their owners.
They're people just like you and me. Just 'cause they're colored people doesn't mean they don't have the same dreams, same feelings we all have. They just don't have their rights yet. That's why we've got to help them head north.
What about steel?
Act like you haven't seen anything. Ask what underground means.
This train has wheels of progress, destination freedom bound. This train is strong and righteous, moving south to north, from town to town. And we are moving, moving. All the trains whose name is freedom, moving, moving. Forward on a shaky track. This train's no easy ride, passengers supply the track. This train is no express ride, but it's train's not going back. This train is swift and silent, underground and out of sight. This train's powered by hope and justice, driving through your town tonight. And we are moving, moving. All the trains whose name is freedom, moving, moving. Forward on a shaky track.
First stop, abolition. Next stop, dignity. Next stop, education, equal opportunity. Next stop, desegregation. Next stop, control of rights. Before we reach our destination, gonna be a long, 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 long ride.
And we are moving, moving. All the trains whose name is freedom, moving, moving. Forward on a shaky track. And we are moving, moving. All the trains whose name is freedom, moving, moving. Forward on a shaky track.
My name is Israel Haynes, conservative Democrat from North Sudbury, which I was elected to represent in the General Court. During my year as a representative, I cast a decisive vote that sent young Charles Sumner to the United States Senate. I liked his integrity and principles. While I agreed with his principles, how could I have known that he would become so zealous in the pursuit of liberty that he would vote to tear our nation asunder? One hundred and sixty-eight of Sudbury's sons responded to the call to serve our republic. Eleven of them will never return. Eleven of them will never return. I wish there had been another way.
Eighteen sixty-two, I, John B. Goodnow, give, devise, and bequeath under my native town of Sudbury in the county of Littlesex the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be used for the purpose of purchasing and keeping a public library for the inhabitants of that town. I also give, devise, and bequeath three acres of land on the northerly part of the Sudbury tavern estate, adjacent to the land of Hal Brown, for the purpose of erecting thereon a suitable building.
Sudbury's first railroad passed through one corner of the town, the Asabet Village. In eighteen seventy-one, when this piece of Sudbury was combined with land from Stowe to form the town of Maynard, Sudbury lost its railroad. That same year, the Framingham and Lowell Track was built. Town had to invest good money in it. Unfortunately, not too many people had business in that direction, and so things didn't change much. Now, in eighteen eighty-one, the Boston and Hudson Track was completed. Now this went somewhere. You could go to Boston in the morning and get back to Sudbury in the evening. You might call it commuting. And it stopped in Whaling, Weston, Waltham, and other stops along the way. Sudbury was back on a major route, and now Boston was just a short ride away. Eventually, the railroad became part of the Boston and Main Line, and it extended west to Pittsburgh, Gardner, all the way to southern Vermont. Sudbury was back in the flow of commerce.
A lot of people would be passing through the town. In the big cities, they've indoor plumbing, bathtub six, and connecting, it never seemed possible.
And it's less odor.
I moved at the town, purchased a bathtub, and installed the central location, the forefront.
But where will the water come from and pool dry?
Well, the town could purchase a hand pump, install the town bathtub, and it could be used for drying water. And we could fill the tub with water and leave it like that until the water is dirtier than the next person ready to use it. Then we could empty it and refill it.
Second emotion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion is defeated.
If this country let it smell like country.
Boy, I love fishing. Hey, have you got any more of that cold side left?
Ain't a drop left. Was good hard stuff, too.
Say, what do you say we go over to that tavern and have some of that good rum?
Can't do it here in town. That damn Full Temperance Society got town meeting to prohibit ale, liquor, and all strab liquor.
You mean we haven't been able to vote that out yet? No, the neighborhood's been too busy drinking to get to town. Oh, and I got a mighty strong thirst for some good New England rum. What do you say we go over to Drybuck's to Maynard?
When the workday ends and the sun is setting and throats are parched and pray for a wedding if you gave each pleasure a sum, none would exceed New England rum. New England rum, New England rum. My taste buds are eager to pour me down some. New England rum, New England rum. Let's get to the tavern, the drinking's begun.
When the battle smoke is in the air and bones are raking from where it's here, there's nothing to make you feel yum like strumble-bodied New England rum.
New England rum, New England rum. My taste buds are eager to pour me down some. New England rum, New England rum. Let's get to the tavern, the drinking's begun. Boy, and Lucy's pains were mean and Veronica'd tell she found her healing tonic of Camper and fresh Perug gum, generously mixed with New England rum. New England rum, New England rum. My taste buds are eager to pour me down some. New England rum, New England rum. Let's get to the tavern, the drinking's begun.
Make a town meeting, John.
Yes, Carrie, many important issues being discussed this evening.
I wish women could vote and take part in town meetings.
But Carrie, I tell you what's being discussed and how I'm going to vote.
But I'd like to be there and vote myself.
Women don't vote, voting is men's work.
They do in Boston, passed in eighty-eight.
But Boston's a big city, lots of foreigners there. It's completely different. Out here, you know everyone.
That's all the more reason for women to go and speak up.
I tell you what, Carrie, I'll bring it up, but don't expect much support.
Good boy, he's fishing, ain't married?
Aw, that's all, look, not skilled. You know what's elevating town? The fish just can't wait to bug.
Hey, the kids should be coming soon for the outing. There's my girl. Hi, huh?
What about the boys doing that?
Any minute, darling.
Will be all boys again.
Oh, I suspect so, honey. Girls aren't much interested in baseball. Have you repeated tickets for me, sweetheart?
Yes, Daddy, me and Mommy.
Is everybody ready for the kids? I expect a dog for a fake feed.
Of course, I've been through this lots of times. Kids for baseball and bowling, your friends and teammates for Christmas, and those noisy newspaper people after some of your games.
Here comes the bus, now let's go. I'll be giving each boy a bottle of love.
Hate me so much, I must have died to want him.
Come on, kids, run in. First thing we're gonna do is we're gonna get some cool lemonade. Then, we'll go out to the ball field, and I'll show you a figure or two. Then we'll all come back to the house and on a fake feed before you head for home. Now, remember, in baseball, you're just like in life. You gotta concentrate, don't swing late, step into it and fall through it. Don't let the curveball throw you. Come on, kids, let me show you. Remember, wear a cap, check your map. Big fire, it's strong. Don't let them throw you over. Play on me when you're sober.
Show us how a champion do it. Put his spark and spirit to it. Always there to save the day, Mister Rooster. How we play? Please show us how you play.
Keep your eye on the ball, use yourself as a wall. Turn the ground or stop to rounder. Don't let the umpires throw you. Come here, kids, let me show you.
Show us how a champion do it. Put his spark and spirit to it. Always there to save the day, Mister Rooster. That's how we play. Yes, sir, that's how we'll play.
That's how we play.
That's how we play.
That's how we play. Hi, my name's Spock. I'm Francis.
I'm Larry.
Sure, I'm Max.
I'm Spud.
I'm Hope.
What's it like in this place? I'm ready for a vacation.
No vacation here. It's work, but it's fun, too.
You got studies and you got chores. Then you gotta tend to your own garden and animal.
How's the food? Good, with plenty of us. We grow most of it ourselves. And I've been working on farms before. I guess this won't be no different.
Oh, this is a lot different. This is a real school. Mr. Young, the headmaster, is strict but fair.
He takes a real interest in every one of us. Why, he even talks to Mr. Ford about us. Henry Ford really comes here?
Oh, yes, he likes it. Stays the Wayside Inn. Has a special suite for himself for Mrs. Ford.
Some guy, three friends. Thomas, Edison, Cal Coolidge, my lady. One Friday night, Henry Ford, the Mrs. came to one of our dance classes.
Dance class? Yes, dance class. Mr. Ford's a real good dancer.
Or an older guy.
Once I even danced with Mrs. Ford.
Of course, she's kinda old, too. I'd rather dance with the pretty girls they bring in from Marlboro.
Girls, wow!
Don't let them catch you trying to carry on with any of them. After the class, on the glass of cider punch, they all go home so we can turn in so we'll be able to do our Saturday morning chores. We got cattle and horses, huge chicken houses, the orchard, the lumber mill, the grist mill, and all jobs.
When you're finished here, there's hardly anything you can't do. You'll get to feel real proud of yourself, too. And you really have a lot of fun.
Hey, but let's get your bags up to your room. You can settle in and meet Mr. Ford tonight. He's coming in for the weekend.
Sounds stupid to me, true. I gotta pinch myself. You know, I'm not like the rest of you guys. I'm the state kid. I did lots of trouble.
We all had.
The only silver spoon in here, us, and we had to steal.
The fallen tree need its very own bed.
Now I ain't some little water I know has one little friend.
Never learned to read or write, and no chance to go to school.
I shook down kids for nickels and I'd spend them on wool.
I'm a slave to the town and cities throughout the land. Kids who know what they want, kids don't understand. Guns, bars, and towers are no damn good. We're just bad, bad boys. They sing in courageable hoods. Just bad, bad boys.
They drops to the country 'cause Sudbury are in war.
We have work to do. Chores in Sudbury have like a moron.
We are teaching all folks who care, folks who love you in the place.
Learning our trades and honest life, not some awful list race.
We're tired of talking and crying. We're not sure about the Lord. We're not the people who care.
God bless every boy!
Guns, bars, and towers are no damn good. We're just bad, bad boys. They sing in courageable hoods. Just bad, bad boys. Just bad, bad boys.
Bad, bad boys!
On behalf of the Sudbury Grange Pomona Chapter, I welcome you all to Sudbury's tricentennial exciting events. The Grange is proud to take an active part in celebrating three hundred years of our town's history. We welcome Governor and Mrs. Saltonstall to our festivities. We invite you to stay for the Great Colonial Ball at the Wayside Inn tomorrow evening and for the Grand Parade on Tuesday morning. I hope you all will be there to join in the fun. We take pride in Sudbury's stability and steadfastness. Since its founding three hundred years ago in war and peace, in prosperity and depression, Sudbury has remained to its residents a reliable beacon in a sea of change. At the time of the American Revolution, our population was about two thousand souls living on the land and producing food from it. Today, in nineteen thirty-nine, our population still is about two thousand inhabitants living in harmony with the land. Farmers and artisans, always ready to help one another. War clouds are darkening over Europe. We, in Sudbury, will do what we are asked to defend our great nation. Yet, we will always remain loyal to our town's heritage. We are one with the land. Farmers tilling the soil and farm wives raising our families. Thus, it will always remain so helpful to God. And now, the Grange will sing a hymn written especially for the three hundred celebrations of Sudbury's founding.
Our roots are planted in our soil, nurtured by our sweat and oil. Willingly we till our land, gathering fruits that nature's rent. Our efforts will be twis success. All of us have done our best. Kill the just and hurt so true to each and wife and child their due. Makers will give time for the eggs or none go hungry or afraid. With God's grace and loving care, our work will yield our needed share. So brothers, sisters, join on the ball, strive together, one. Strike together, one and all, through killergest and ever be creators of worlds of harmony.
I talked with a fellow last week. He was interested in buying a piece of South Field up towards Redmond. Says he wants to build six houses. Short new street, three houses on the side. Offered me $5,000 for six acres of scrub brushwood. Couldn't be worth more than $100 or $200 an acre.
So, what'd you tell him?
If he's crazy enough to offer that kind of money, I'll sell. Farm hasn't taken in that much in a year, and I could use the money to make repairs and such.
Fellow came out from Boston the other day. Took it by a path to Rosewood on North Long Road. Had another fellow with him drawing up claims or something.
Probably, probably. Okay, how else does it hurt to build?
Haven't even talked about how much land yet.
Don't be in a hurry to sell all of it right away either. You only sell a portion of the land. That's all he can build on and sell. Then when he comes back to buy more land, he'll be willing to pay a lot more for it.
Oh, that's all fine and good, but I'm not so sure people are looking to move out here.
Are you kidding? This is pretty country. Lots of land. Except for Route 20. The trucks making noise there, the rest is very, very quiet. With Route 128 coming together and industry now west of Boston, we're a lot closer to where people are working.
Postmaster General? This is Boss Bradshaw calling from Sudbury, Massachusetts. Ha, ha, we're just fine. And how are your homes yellow white today? Well, actually, I'm not calling off that. I'm calling about those new postal codes you're setting up. Uh, you know, Sudbury was one of the first towns to enter the American Revolution. And since Massachusetts will be getting codes in the 1, 2000s, I'd like to get 1776 for Sudbury. There'll be five digits in the code? Hmm. Well, that's fine with me. Zero, one, seven, seven, six. We just won't pay any attention to the zero.
With all the new subdivisions springing up in town, we've got a lot of new kids to school. Center building and white school just don't have enough room. They don't address the population growth, just north and south of Route 20. We're gonna have to think about building new schools.
Well, they've discussed putting new schools up in the Houseblock Road area. And, you know, I'll kind of follow that, I'll back it. And I think we should appoint a school building committee. And, you know, try to have them assessing president's future needs, picking a site, we don't have plans for a new school to fill those needs. I believe we allow up to $5,000 for those purposes.
(singing) I got your Route 20 building plenty of building, stable, isolated, firemen, and empty men, ventilation, ruination, roofs. Main to main to vacuum, build, maybe build, till every inch of that's filled. Traffic grows more inertial as you get more commercial. Fill this to the left, fill it to the right. (singing) A small hole in the wall, big one down the same alley. When you build it, when you build it, it's taking, isolated, firemen, empty men, ventilation, ruination, roofs.
We have now heard the presentation from the school building committee. They have recommended a new campus school with separate but connected areas integrated with the outdoors and many other design features. Bottom line, $550,000.
Oh, very fancy and elegant, but this is not a rich town. We need economical, no thrill school space, and we need it fast.
If you want cheap, box classrooms, then you don't need our committee.
Sure enough.
I resign.
Come, let's go.
On move, we appoint a new low-cost school building committee and pare down this architectural wonder to just a plain, practical $440,000 school building. And then, let's get it built.
We need more tax income in order to support the new schools. We can't just keep buildings raising the real estate taxes.
We need tax-paying industry and businesses to share the burden.
Wayland has a new Raytheon plant, and look what happened. Wayland gets benefit of increased tax help. Trouble is, a lot of the workers at Raytheon Wayland live in Sudbury and worry about the cost of educating their children. What about a Raytheon plant for Sudbury?
Raytheon is a major growing local company. And since Sudbury is not a manufacturing town, we'd be most interested in having Raytheon build a research and development facility here at the old Hood Dairy site on Route 20.
But, Mr. Cuddy, Sudbury is a town of farms and greenhouses, not a factory area. We don't want a factory in South Sudbury.
Like I said, a research and development facility is what we're talking about. Like a neat trim, well-designed, attractive building with laboratories, offices, and development spaces set well back from the road.
But it will change the whole nature of things.
Sudbury, the nature of Sudbury is changing. Just look around. Sudbury is no longer the town of pig farms and mosquitoes. It's the fastest-growing town in the Commonwealth. We're changing. We need selective industry and commercial growth to offset the older residential growth.
I still can't see it. Sudbury is a town of farms and homes, and we want it to stay that way.
Town Planning Board has taken long and hard to develop a master plan in the town of Sudbury. You all have your copies of it. Let me summarize the major points, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have. Land development in the past decade has been proceeding at a rapid pace. Development has taxed our water and our range capacity, and certainly has increased funding on roads built in the interim considerably less. Moreover, as the cost of land has increased so too the population, creating an even greater need for police and fire services. And because of our growing young families, we have a constant need for schools to accommodate them. In fact, since 1953, we've added almost a school a year to keep up with our population.
We project... We project by 1990, the town population to approach 30,000. We expect to expand our schools to meet these increasing needs. We see 7,300 pupils by 1990. Quiet, 1950, 47 children were born. In 1960, 240 children were born to our Sudbury families.
We project that water demand by 1990 will be 100 times that of the present due to new building, industrial and commercial needs, and increased usage for households. We'll need up to 10 million gallons on the largest single demand day. A hot one when everyone's trying to save their funds. We had better secure sufficient wellfields to meet the demand.
We're bringing Raytheon to the council before town meeting for the third time. If we miss this opportunity and they select another town, we really lose out. Do you know what the tax rate will be this year if we don't bring in industry and get some relief?
I'm fine with casting, but I'm reconsidering. Sudbury is changing, and we have to move with the changes. I think I'll vote hard this year.
I'll, I'll accept it too. I think it's a good thing to do. Sudbury has got to change.
We got this proposal from Star to build a big supermarket with a string of other stores attached.
But we don't need another supermarket. We've already got Sudbury Super and First National.
There are a lot more people now. Many of them aren't very satisfied with our markets and only shop elsewhere. Besides, if we had a really fine market, people from Wayland, Baltimore, Redmond would come here to shop.
Yeah, right, and bring in more traffic too.
Well, it's inevitable. And it may just turn out to be a good thing.
The school committee has had to revise its needs on the basis of the unanticipated drop in Sudbury's birth rate and school population.
They're not taking them like they used to.
Not only has the population dropped, but we have vacant classroom space in all of our buildings. We need to consolidate our operations and begin to run things more efficiently.
(singing) College students in Sudbury, they're all building this during a long post-ride. This is an increase for that killer for capacity that the days of strange is large lies.
But the state's already, not to be easy regulations. But the state regulations don't go over the back because they're going to have to act. Therefore, we are quick, fast, available, and get this one on the bell before one is given, someone's on the way to call on the builders. You watch what happens over the next 18 months.
Now that we of the sign review committee have gotten our new regulations approved by town meetings, our board is charged with forcing them to preserve our town's rural colonial character.
Madam Chairman, you ruled our sign is in violation of town regulations. But it's the same sign we had in terms of our business for the past 15 years. It was backed over by a dump truck, so we repainted it to repair it.
When you repainted the sign, you altered the color and the wording. That constitutes a new sign, and it falls under the new codes. Your new sign exceeds allowable limits by two square feet, and it violates the setback regulations. Besides, it would have been more attractive in dark wood with curved letters.
But it's the same sign, don't you see that? Why should these make up your labor score frustration?
Sudbury's school population is again on the rise. We've had to use temporary classroom space at the Hanes School to accommodate the overload. We've got to reject ahead and develop additional classroom space to meet the increased demand.
But are those projections reliable? I mean, you guessed wrong before.
Look, these projections are based on an actual town with children living in Sudbury. It doesn't even anticipate the increase due to further immigration. There are over 130 houses in town for sale to new families.
But what those houses cost, they won't be able to afford children.
Now that's not true either. Many of the couples buying those expensive new homes are moving in with children, or they're having them shortly after they get here. Sudbury's birth rate is really on the rise, and many of those couples are both working so they can support their lifestyle. Their children need daycare even before they reach kindergarten age. We've got to either reopen one or both of the closed schools and add classroom spaces welts, or build a whole new school. The projected cost of these additions and renovations is $12 million. The town had already voted to override this, uh, voted to allow override with a proposition two and a half weeks' range. Besides, 90% of this cost will be covered by the state.
I just wanna say that I can't believe that this town is willing to spend $12 million for school expansion without backing even an embrace. And at the same time, you've brought down a much-needed senior citizen center. Shame on you. This town doesn't care about its older residents.
Now that's not true. A senior citizen center was on proposed library land. This town is not against its senior citizens. We're not concerned with who are for you to pick with each other. It sure wasn't concerned about building a complex when it goes to low-cost housing, our books are quite clear complex, it's on and for me. We told it like it was, and no one listened.
Now that's not the issue.
It has nothing to do with the schools, it's to the subject. Oh, you're all just arguing. We don't need so many issues to think about all at once. Besides, we're not called by on each side of all these difficult questions. We should pick a small group of experts and leave the decisions to them.
Quiet, quiet. Now stop for a minute and listen. 350 years ago, when a small group of us settled this fertile valley, we had many decisions to make. We could have turned over the governing of our town to a few men, make all the decisions and impose them on those who came to settle here. We chose a harder but fairer way. We chose to have all free men, and now women too, participate in an open town meeting where any relevant issue could be brought up, argued over, and voted on. And sometimes, we've been obliged to accept rejection of things that we proposed. But we believed then, as we believe now, that this is the fairest and most responsible way to run our town. A daring experiment in trusting in people to make laws, to support those laws, and to resist tyranny. We bequeathed to our heirs not only this good land on which they lived and beneath which we sleep, but the responsibility to recognize and address problems that afflicted every generation.
We have plenty of those.
As did we all. The number and the details may differ, but... Earning a living, feeding our families, educating our children, protecting our homes, caring for the poor and the wanting, avoiding acts that ruin the land for subsequent generations. We argued over all these issues too. And we didn't know we solved them either. But we did discuss them, and in so doing made sure that attention... sure that attention was paid. Life is so complicated now. It always has seemed that way. Look how easily you feed your families, even in the winter and in the spring. I marvel at your market shelves. We always lived with the threat of starvation.
We have such difficult decisions to make.
Listen to me. When the decisions are difficult, the best way to clarify your thoughts is find out all you can about the issues, come to town meeting, listen to the arguments, and vote your own mind. It's not perfect, but it's as close as we've come. And if you find you've made a mistake, you can always bring the matter back and vote it differently. That means everyone.